Good evening. I would like to call to order the October 12th, 2015 Belvoir City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. Formal approval of the city council meeting minutes of September 14th, 2015. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None.
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. We really only have one thing tonight, and I would like to welcome Doug McClarty from Green County Park District. He's a commissioner there, and he's going to be presenting some information about upcoming park levy that will be on the November ballot. Mr. McClarty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for giving us the opportunity to present some background on Issue 18, Keeping Up Green County Park District. I'd like to introduce Chris Bellvednar, who is the Director of the Green County Parks, and she is our manager, our architect, our definite leader, and she's one of the reasons why we're such an envy of most of Ohio's other park districts. A great leader. Today, our Green County parks and trails are safe and clean and enjoy a superb reputation. They provide great outdoor recreation while preserving our county's green space and water quality. They add a virtual -- excuse me. They add a vital component to healthy lifestyles while contributing to the county's economic development. They make a difference in people's lives and, in many ways, reflect the character of our community. The Park District is 50 years old. Today, our combined park sites and trails see over 2 million visits a year. Last year, we provided nature-based programs serving over 20,000 residents, and demand continues to grow. We manage all of our work with a small but dedicated staff of 28 passionate, full-time workers and a tireless group of dedicated volunteers. There's been no staff increases in seven years. But today, we face some really serious challenges. Seventy-five percent of our yearly budget comes from the state. Since 2009, over the last seven years, our yearly budget has been slashed by 50 percent. These funding cuts impact everything we do: trail and river maintenance, repairs to park sites, programming for children and seniors, everything. Given this budget situation, funding of all significant parks and trails' maintenance and improvements has now been halted. We're struggling to maintain our paved trails and park sites, essentially using only temporary repairs. And you know, you can only patch up a roof or a bridge so many times before you need to tear it down and do it again, and we're right at that point. Millions in maintenance and capital improvement projects have been indefinitely deferred. Funds once set aside for preserving additional green space have been eliminated. So someone comes up to us and says, "You know, I've got 20 acres that I'd like to sell you at a phenomenal price. It butts up against one of your parks. It'll be perfect for you." Can't even talk to them. No money. Funds are gone. They come back two weeks later and say, "Listen, we've thought about this. We want to donate the land to you." Can't accept it. Not enough money to maintain it. That's our situation. Our hope to create more clean water initiatives and river recreation opportunities along the Little Miami have been put on hold, and the list goes on and on, and I won't give you any more of them. We're operating at the margins, and we're out of options. So what do we need? We need a new, long-term, stable funding source, funds we can depend on from year to year to get the job done right. We decided, after looking at all options, to place a small .9 mil levy for five years before the voters. It'll be Issue 18 on the ballot. A small levy with a huge impact on our parks and trails and the communities they serve. This levy will raise around $3.3 million a year and cost about $2.60 a month per $100,000 of assessed value for a property owner. It's important to note here, I think very important to note, the Green County Park District has not asked for levy support in over 40 years. What will this levy fund? Our first priority is to maintain, repair, or replace the resources we currently operate with. Let me be more specific. Of the money raised, $1 million will be earmarked for our popular trail system each year. $1 million will be used for capital improvements to our countywide park system. Daily maintenance, operations, and staffing will consume the rest. Now, you know, Belvoir used to be part of the Great Shawnee Nation, led by the great Chief Tecumseh. The Shawnee people had a name for the mythological figure who watches over the earth, the forest, and the rivers. Her name was Kokumtheena, which translates to grandmother. We'd like you to remember this grandmother when casting your vote in November, because Kokumtheena is part of your family legacy of enjoying the great outdoors, your legacy to your children, your grandchildren, and your great-grandchildren, and because she needs you now to help save our parks and trails. I urge you to support Issue 18 to keep up Green County parks and trails. Thank you, council, for letting us tell you about the situation and for your continued support. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClarty.
Thank you.
Does anyone on council have any questions for Mr. McClarty?
I had a question in terms of, when you talk about trails, does that include the bike trails, the bike paths?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Primarily the bike trails.
Okay.
But we also have hiking trails.
Gotcha. But the bike paths that are in Green County then belong to the Green County Park District? Is that the way that works?
Chris Bell?
The 62 miles of paved pathway here in Green County, and they're paved pathways, so they're multi-use trails, hiking, walking, and during the winter months, it's snowshoeing and even in occasional dog sled and cross-country skiing. Those trails are actually owned by a total of eight different jurisdictions in Green County. The Park District owns about 17 percent of those trails. The county commissioners of Green County own about 17 percent of those trails. City of Xenia owns something like 30 percent, 32 percent. Fairborn, Beaver Creek, Xenia Township, as well as Cedarville, all own portions of those trails. The thoroughfare plan for Green County has a couple of other trails that are yet to be identified exactly as to where they should go, and those aren't yet developed. The $1 million for trails is for trail maintenance of the existing 62 miles of paved pathway.
Okay.
We do that maintenance. We do it for all of them.
Ah, so even though there's shared ownership, the maintenance falls to you?
The day-to-day operation falls to Green County Parks and Trails.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's not just the 17 percent that?
No, no. It is all 62 miles. And what that does, the value of that, is that you have the continuity of all 62 miles of trail looking identical.
Sure.
And so when you leave the area that we maintain, for instance, Hedges Road South on the Little Miami Scenic Trail, you see a real difference from Hedges Road North in terms of, that's the dividing line, and you can really tell where we are no longer maintaining, that that's not what we maintain. So that's, the big difference is that 62 miles of trails has a continuity of look and design, and that's really the economic engine here in Green County. We know for a fact that people come to Green County, visit all of the cities and villages and townships in Green County, and spend their money here because of that look. We're recognized nationally for the maintenance we do. Good question. Thank you for asking.
Any other questions on council? Seeing none, well, thank you very, very much. I know we do have, a lot of people in Belvoir probably paying houses benefit me, and we do have Spring Lakes, which is one of your parks, I believe.
It is one of the parks and trail sites, yes?
Yeah, and that's very popular because it's about 300 yards from here, maybe 600 yards from here.
Actually, I thought that belonged to Metro Parks, Dayton Metro Parks.
Actually, Spring Lakes Park is actually owned by the Board of County Commissioners of Green County. That's not even a park district site, but, and that's one of those gray areas is that Green County Park District Commissioners have a management agreement with the Board of County Commissioners. The Park District doesn't have employees. That management agreement with the county commissioners is where the employees come from to manage, operate, and program the Park District sites.
Okay. Because Spring Lakes wasn't in your list of places?
That is correct. Spring Lakes is one of the county commissioner's sites.
Okay. So the maintenance funding for that is out of this levy, or is not?
That is under the Board of County Commissioners' general fund. That is not part of this levy.
Okay. Did not know that either.
It is one of those distinguishing points, but it's really unique that we're the only entity in all of the state that we are aware of that has two park systems under one umbrella because of this management agreement. And what that means for you, the taxpayers, is that you're not paying for two park directors, two finance departments, two maintenance, two sets of law enforcement to manage and maintain. It's all one, so it is a real tax savings. It's really what Governor Kasich came into office wanting people, wanting the various political jurisdictions to do, was to join forces and to operate as much shared courses, whereas in this case, that's been occurring for over 40 years now.
You set the standard.
Yes, actually, I think so.
Any other questions on council?
The Spring Valley Shooting Range, is that part of?
No, that is ODNR, the High Department of Natural Resources. Yeah. It's a good site.
It is.
Yeah.
All right.
You'll be happy to know I left some signs, yard signs outside by the all there, so I'm sure you'll all want to take one.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good evening.
You, too.
Only other thing on mayor's announcements, I would like to thank all the students in the third grade at Bell Creek Elementary School. I got the chance to go speak with three classes of kids, and they asked some really good questions, always very entertaining, and they always asked very good questions. I know they also came down here and...
Yes, they came on Friday to visit here in the police department and the Short Creek Township Fire Department also.
This is an annual event, and it's nice to see each of the kids. I know I've been doing it for the three, four years now as mayor, and it's always fun to see all the kids and the teachers. That's all I have for mayor's announcements. Public hearings, we have one public hearing tonight, and that's ordinance number 2015-12. Mr. Schweller?
Yes, Mayor, ordinance number 2015-12, an ordinance approving an addendum to the solid waste and recyclable material collection and disposal contract with Rumke of Ohio Inc. Whereas the city of Belvoir participated in 2012 Southwest Ohio Regional Refuse Consortium invitation to bid for the collection, transportation, and delivery for disposal or processing of residential solid waste and recyclable materials, and whereas the city entered into a contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc. for a three-year period, January 1, 2013 to December 31, 2015, based on the results of this bid, whereas the city desires to extend the contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc. for a period of one year, January 1, 2016 to December 31, 2016, using the pricing established in the 2012 bid. Now, therefore, the city of Belvoir hereby ordains Section 1, that the contract addendum with Rumke of Ohio, Inc. is hereby approved; Section 2, that the city managers hereby authorized to execute the addendum, which is attached hereto with Rumke of Ohio, Inc. effective January 1, 2016, and to take such other action as required; and finally, Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Yes, this is a, obviously, a contract extension with Rumke. The original contract for the three-year period, the city paid $12.63 per customer per month. The rate to the resident is $13 per month. With this option for the fourth year of that contract, that would increase less than 2 percent to $12.86. There is another option for next year, or for 2017, that we will discuss next year, that would increase it again, but we don't anticipate any changes to the rate that we're charging the resident. We'll still be able to keep that at the $13 per month for the resident if we go forward with Rumke. Overall, I think we've had a very good experience with Rumke and their collection. There's always issues occasionally, but they've been very responsive to those issues. When they called, they'll go back and pick up things, things of that nature. So we would recommend approval of this one-year contract addendum.
Any questions on council? I know we've talked about this before. We introduced this at our last meeting. I think we get a very good bang for our buck for only $13 a month for all the residents, so I'm sure there's probably not another city who has rates that low to guess, but I would know.
I think it's a good rate. I just had a question. I mean, it separates them into a $12.03 and then an $0.83 for a generation fee factor. I was just curious what that was.
Because this, when we did the bid originally, there were entities from multiple counties. So each county, the $12.03 is actually what goes to Rumke. The $0.83 goes to the Green County Solid Waste District. In Montgomery County, that's a different rate, and in Hamilton County, it's zero. So depending on where you're located, that's why they broke it out that way. Ours is actually the highest of, it's a $10 per ton fee, so they had to break ours out so that everyone, because within the bid, we had ourselves, the city of Miami'sburg, and Montgomery County, and then there were multiple entities down in Hamilton County. So they're only paying the $12.03 for that service, where we're paying the $12.86, which is the $12.03 plus the $0.83.
But the generation fee factor, is the generation fee? I mean, what?
Pays for the trash to go into the dump.
It's, and you're right. It pays for, and it pays for the operations of the Green County Solid Waste District.
Okay.
They have to, they have to fund that some way, and that's that they choose to fund it by, for every ton that goes into the landfill, they get $10. And based on an average of one ton, I think it's one ton per customer per year, that's where the $0.83 comes from.
Good reason to look at optional places to put grass and leaves.
Well, that, I'm glad you mentioned that. That is something that I wanted to clarify. I know there was an article in the paper following our last meeting that said that recycling would not continue. That is incorrect. Recycling will continue, and there's no change to that. When, when we talked last time, you mentioned the grass clippings and that going there. That is what will go to the landfill, but I think the article stated something to the effect that recycling was mixed with the rest of the trash and was going to the landfill, and that is not the case. Recycling is a separate truck, goes there separately. We'll continue to do that. There's no change to the recycling program.
But are, but all of the grass and leaves and branches that people put out are picked up with solid waste, and it goes to the dump?
Absolutely, yes. And there's, they have an option if they want to drive it up to Xenia. There is a yardway site in Xenia, but the site that was here locally no longer exists than...
You can take it to Tom Smolch, but they charge to take it, to put it there. But, I mean, that's a lot of weight, and it should go into, back into the land.
Yes.
So I'd still like to investigate how we could work with somebody to make that happen.
Okay.
Is there an option, I don't, I don't want to get too far off this, but that is an important point. I mean, I know we had a local place, and Tom's bought the land, and that's why we had to move it off of the site, down off of Ferry Road. Have we pursued with the county of figuring out another place to have a local one?
The Solid Waste District of Green County, under the influence of the Green County Commissioners, have closed the satellite collection yards, and to my understanding, they have no intention of ever opening those again.
So Beaver Creek and all those, they're all closed now?
Well, I don't know that they're all closed, but I think, I think ours and Fairborn closed. Beaver Creek may have been open, but I think they're actually closing theirs because they needed the land for something else, or there was something else going on there. But the commissioners made the decision that if it, if it wasn't a profit-making, if it, if it was costing money, that it was, it was not going to continue. So they did not want to fund that, and that was made at the, it was made at the Green County Solid Waste District, but I know the Green County Commissioners had a strong influence on that decision.
Okay.
Because we talked for a period of time of putting it where the old...
Right.
Lift station was.
Lift station was.
Yeah. But there was no funding available to put it there. I mean, there were other issues with that site, too, so I'm not sure that was the best solution anyway, but that all went by the, by the wayside. So there's not been, there are, there was talk of having some contracts with somebody like a Tom Smolch to take that for free, but I don't know that those have ever, at least they're not one in our area, has materialized to the point that we can recommend it to our residents.
Right.
And to drive a couple of cans of green waste to Xenia.
Makes no sense.
Makes no sense.
Well, I mean, I do it every once in a while when I have an entire trailer load, but still, you know, it was...
But you have to have a trailer to do it.
Well, you come get it if you want it. But no, it's, like I said, it's something that I think was, was used by the residents, that was appreciated. I know, you know, I personally know of quite a few people that took advantage of that, and it's just unfortunate that we don't have that.
We were the smallest. I asked for all the numbers, and we were absolutely the smallest of the group.
I think the only way that it would come back is if we, we and/or the township, and working with the township, wanted to do something and put it in a location, obviously finding a location that you could do that, and then staffing it, you know, you just can't let it, let people drop it off and...
Because you'll get everything.
Right, right. It'll become a dump. So I think that, at this point, I think that's the only viable option that we have.
Yeah, for now. I have some ideas.
Mark, on the recycling, on the recycling stuff that they pick up, is that counted for tonnage? They don't count that?
No.
No. It separates out. I get a report on a monthly basis with the tonnage that goes to the landfill, and then the recycling, Rumke actually takes it to their sorting facility, and will sort it out, and then they obviously sell it where they can, or whatever they can, they can do with that.
It's a separate truck.
Yeah, I've seen it.
So, no mix.
If we want to save money ourselves, the best thing to do is recycle as much as you can to get that tonnage down.
Yep.
Recycle and compost.
And compost.
And compost.
Yeah.
Any other questions on council?
Yeah, Mark, is the Southwest Ohio Regional Refuse Consortium still in play? Are they active? Are we going to go back to market for bids again at some point, and we're just continuing with the one-year extensions, or what's the...
Well, we have, we have the option for an additional one-year extension for 2017. At that point, for 2018, we will have to go up the bid, and the SWOR is what they call that. They are, they continue to do that, so they, in fact, they have a separate bidding process going on right now with some other entities. So when it comes back up, I would assume that we would look at them or look if there's anyone else to partner with. Miami'sburg is on the same timeframe as us, and I think that benefited us. It may benefit us to find some other people in the Dayton region. We might be get some, as opposed to splitting it, but yes, we would.
Presumably, say, if these guys through 17, and then at that point, time to go out to bid again.
Yes. Yep.
Any other questions on council? This is a public hearing, so we do open it up. You will need to come up here, please say your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Joe Marantl, that's M-A-R-A-N-T-L, 1899 Shore Drive, and I think you've taken care of most of our concerns, but I wanted to make a suggestion. We saw the article in the paper, and it was very emphatic, and said that all of the recycling was hauled to the landfill, and that caused quite a stir, because, you know, as you all know, you take the yogurt containers, you're rinsing it out with water. I know I make several trips to the little green bucket, and I dump it into the recycle.
The big green bucket.
Yeah. So the thing I suggest strongly, since you've assured us that that's not the case, that it's being recycled, and it will continue to be recycled, I would like to propose that the newspaper publish a retraction, because I'm sure what's happening is people who are diligently separating after seeing that are not.
Oh, yeah. I totally agree.
Yeah, I know. I've, I've talked with several people that were concerned and alarmed when they saw that same article, and I agree with you. I think we want to absolutely make sure to the, to the public that that recycling program is continuing, is active, and does work.
This is exactly what we have now. The only difference is there's a little 2 percent increase.
Right. That the residents won't see.
You won't see it, but they're, internally, there's 2 percent increase, but you guys won't see it. It'll still be the exact same amount on your bill, and we'll still process it the same way.
And the correction needs to be in as prominent a place as the original article was.
Yes, yes.
I know where retractions usually end up.
That'll be fine, and I would like to say that the one thing in the article that we agree with is that Rumke overall has done a very good job. Their drivers have been super.
Right.
So that's all I have. I think Mike might want to reply.
We can also put something on the utility bills as they go out. We have a place for a message there.
Utility bill.
Yeah, we can, we can put that out just to make sure people understand what's going on.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing to come here and speak. My name is Mike Tortorici. I live at 1915 Shore Drive. I'll spell my last name for you. It's T-O-R-T-O-R-I-C-I. Joe and I talked about the recycling issue, and I have a question. We do pay extra for those recycling barrels. Do you share the revenue, or do we share the revenue with Rumke as a town?
We don't specifically. I mean, it's in their rate that they're charging us, so that $12.03 accounts for the fact that they, they provide those bins to us.
And they get, and they get the set, and they get the profit.
And then they get, they get the profit from it, and, but there's times that there is not a profit based on the market for recycling. So we don't, we also don't have to pay for it when there's not a market for newspaper or things like that. So it's a fixed cost to us, and it's incorporated in there, and then they have to worry about the ups and downs of the recycling market as that may happen, so.
That answers that question.
And when we did this, we went, and I, how many cities we went up to bid?
I think there were five or six.
Five or six. It was a very competitive bid process, and, and our rates right now are very good, and that's all part of including that bid package, and it's a fixed rate. We know what it's going to be, and it makes it a lot easier to put it on a, the water bill's a fixed number.
Well, sure. Very good. I have another question, and I don't know if you have the answer. The gentleman that was up here before talking about the parks, and he indicated that he received a 50 percent decrease in funding from the state. Did other localities receive that as well, that reduction? And is there any way that he can go back and get some more money from the state?
Well, this is sort of off the subject, which technically...
I know.
But we'll, we'll be quick about it and get this public hearing closed, but...
So, yes, everyone, every local government saw, maybe not a 50 percent reduction of total revenue, but they saw a 50 percent reduction of revenue from the state of Ohio. So in our case, for the city, it wasn't 50 percent of our budget like it may have been for them, but it was 50 percent. It totaled to probably about $300,000 per year.
For us.
For us. I'm not sure what the Park District was. I don't know what their budget was. But what has happened is the governor has made it very clear that he wants to cut taxes on the state level. By cutting income taxes on the state level, that means he has less money to pass on, so he has passed less money on to the localities, and then what you find are things exactly like what the Park District is doing. They are having to get that money that used to be effectively collected by the state and given to them. Now they have to go out and have a, their own separate tax levy to generate that same money.
But is it a universal thing?
Yes, it's, yes, yes. And the township, the city, Park District, they all...
Our funds, our local government funds were cut. Our tangible personal property tax, the setbacks we used to get from the state, those were cut, and then the estate tax were removed.
Was eliminated, yeah.
So those three things, and they affect every city differently based upon how much you get. Oakwood, for example, received huge amounts in estate tax, so it pretty much devastated their budget. So they had to go ask the residents what they want to do. So everyone got cut just a little different ways, and it all started with balancing the budget when Kasich got in there.
Well, thank you very much, Lisa.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the input. Anyone else? This is a public hearing. If I don't see anyone else, I will call this public hearing closed. May I have a motion to pass ordinance number 2015-12?
I would like to move for the adoption of ordinance 2015-12.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
That was Mr. Mark.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt ordinance number 20-12, approving an addendum to the solid waste and recyclable material collection and disposable contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., seconded, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one resolution this evening, Resolution Number 2015-FF. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 2015-FF, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas this council, in accordance with provisions of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next suc- a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 1, 2016. And whereas the Budget Commission of Green County, Ohio, has certified its actions thereon to this council, together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council, and what part thereof is without and what part within the 10 mil tax limitation. Now, therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and its certification be and the same are hereby accepted. Section 2, that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said city, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitation as attached hereto. Section 3, that the clerk of this council be and she is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the county auditor of said county. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, this is an annual requirement. Earlier this year, we submitted the tax budget to the Green County Auditor. The Budget Commission for Green County, then, from that tax budget, is required to set the amounts and rates for the property taxes for the upcoming fiscal year. The attached shows that the city of Belbrook has 19.5 mils of property tax that generates just under $3 million for the general fund, police protection, and fire protection. And with this action, thus, the council will certify that these rates are acceptable, and they will show up on the property tax bills that are received in 2016 by the residents.
Any questions on the council? We do this every year. And this is no tax rates are changing. It's just certifying it so we can collect the money.
Keep collecting the money, yes.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2015-FF?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2015-FF.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt Resolution Number 20-15-FF, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, seconded by Mrs. Seager Lawson. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestatter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. That is it for resolutions and public hearings this evening. We do have a city manager's report.
Yes. The first item, Mr. Schweller mentioned the last time, that the audit of financial statements, the audit for the 2014 fiscal year had been completed. Those financial statements are now finally available. They're on the city's website, the full statements, if anyone wants to view those. I, I put together just a couple of quick slides here. I know there's a lot of numbers, but just to give you a, a brief summary of those financial statements. The top section here talks about the assets comparing 2014 to the end of 2013. As you can see, the, we had a positive increase in the cash investments, the receivables, and the other assets. There was a decrease in the capital assets of over $1.5 million, primarily due to depreciating those assets. So, the net increase, or net decrease in assets was $285,000, but again, primarily related to the depreciation of assets. On the liability side, our liabilities decreased in all of those. So, overall, the, the liability is decreased by 221,000. The net effect of this on our net position, our net investment in capital assets decreased by 380,000, but our restricted and our unrestricted both increased by combined 316,000. Just to summarize, I mean, this is just, obviously, I show it to you only to say that we're still in stable financial position. Our assets are actually only, our net position only decreased slightly, mostly not by a cash position, but by a paper entry, which is depreciation. So, we continue to be in a positive financial position, and as we go into our budget discussions, you'll see more about this. But from a financial statement, we had a clean audit, and it was an unqualified opinion. We continue to have positive reviews from the Auditor of State's office. And if anyone has any questions about, about the financial status of the city, we welcome them to call and ask questions. Look on the website at the financial statements. It's, we try to make it as transparent as possible with what we have.
And Mark, you may have mentioned too, the fact that we're, you know, 12 days into the 10th month of the year, we're just now being able to reduce this financial, or basically produce the financial reports to the citizens as something that doesn't go unnoticed with this council. We have talked with the state numerous times and told them we would like to have the audit done much quicker, release results much earlier. And last year, I think we released in November.
Yes.
This year, we're about a month ahead of time. We've talked again this year. So, we're pushing as hard as we can to get these results to be closer to contemporaneous in what it is right now. So, we, we share your concerns if that is something you've noticed.
Ironically, somebody from the Auditor of State's office, one of their regional reps just happened to stop by the other day and was, wanted to just chat, and that was the, the topic that I discussed with him is...
Good.
I contacted them at the end of March to say that the financial statements were prepared and they were ready to be audited. We didn't, they didn't complete their job until September. If the roles had been reversed and we had not done something on time, they would have certainly let us know about it. So, I, I continue to share that. That is a, a topic that I bring up, but so far, it hasn't gotten me anywhere. So, the next thing, if you saw in the paper, we had, the Attorney General's Office did a rock salt lawsuit against Morton and Cargill, and that was recently settled. It was about, hold on here, it's about an 11.5 million dollar settlement. It was for the years 2008 through 2011. The city did get a check as a result of that of just about $6,500 back from that. If I look back at those years, I think the, the price in like 2007 was like $40 a ton, and then it ramped up to like $100 a ton. And then it went back, and then it went back to 60, which is about where we are now. So, we're still paying significantly more than we were then. We did get some money more, some money back, far more than I ever thought we would. I thought we'd get a check for 25 bucks or something like that. So, so we did get some money. We have just put it back in the fund.
Or free coffee at Safeway.
Right, or something like that. So, we put it back in the fund. We'll end up buying more salt with it this year.
Was there a calculation or a formula that came up for that number? Was it based on the amount that we purchased?
Yes, we, we submitted all our purchases and what we spent for those years from 2008 to 2011. So, anyone who submitted that data, then I think it was a pro rata share once the, the money came off the top for the attorneys and things like that. Then, then the rest was divvied out.
I'm willing to bet their check was bigger than $6,500.
I'm, I'm going to assume so, so...
Are you going to talk to Dale about the, remember last year because of the shortage of salt, we decreased the number of...
We are going to talk with him when, when, when we talk with him about his budget. We'll, we'll have, that's when we talked with him last year. We, we talked about changing the strategy because the price went up and there was a limited amount of salt and things of that nature.
And we had to take delivery all at once.
And we'd take delivery, and there was all kinds of things. So, that when we talk about the Service Department budget, which I think is the meeting, the first meeting in November is when we're going to do that one, that was another topic that we're going to talk about again, how, how to approach that and what council's desire is with that. So, we will talk about that again.
It was nice not to have to put so much salt out last year for the, for the ecology and the health of our cars and, you know, all around. So, I, I'd like that to be included in the conversation.
Well, that's the, that is the conversation that we'll have, is that last year, they developed a street plan where there were certain streets that they did not salt at all based on their topography and, and the traffic and things of that nature. The question is, do we want to continue with that, or do we want to go back to what we did before, which was really treating every street? Obviously, there's priorities, and some streets are going to go before others, but they all got treated. So, that's the conversation that we'll have when, when Dale comes into the meeting in November.
Right.
Another item that I've mentioned in the, in our, in your packet was the ISO rating. So, the Insurance Services Office, they came out and wrote, our fire department, their review of the fire department is only about fire suppression. So, it's not about emergency medical service. It's not about medic runs, anything like that. It's only about fire suppression. They spent part of the day out here. They review a number of things. One, they review our emergency communications, our 911. Obviously, they review the fire department, the equipment, the staffing, the training, all of those things. And then the final thing they review is our water supply. So, they, they did a comprehensive review. They came back, they issued a report, and our ISO rating improved from what was a 3 when they did it in 2007. It is now a 2. So, it's a 1 to 9 scale. There are less than 3% of the fire departments in the country that have a 2 or better. So, we're, we're pretty, pretty unique and pretty happy for the fire department, obviously. They, they put a lot, a lot of that rating is based on the work that they do, the training they do, the equipment they maintain, and everything like that. So, I think it's pretty impressive. In, in theory, it translates to lower insurance, homeowner's insurance rate for the residents. I doubt that it's anything that someone's going to notice significantly, but it is, I guess it's better than going the opposite way where you could see a higher rate. So, that is one of the factors when the, the insurance companies price your homeowner's insurance policy. That's one of the things that they look at. So, I think it's a, it's a nice accomplishment for the fire department to have improved that rating and to be in that, that category again this year, or for this year.
Is this something that a homeowner could mention to his insurance agent?
This is something a homeowner should mention to their insurance agent.
They should. They probably already know it because I am, if that, not all insurance companies use it, but if it is part of that factor, that equation that goes in, it should be in there. But I, it wouldn't hurt that they mention it to their agent and say that we are an ISO, a 2 rated ISO.
How, how will we advise our citizens about that? Can we put something on our website?
We could put it on our website, absolutely. Like I said, I think most of that happens behind the scenes, and it's not something that you have to go out and tell the insurance company because they just put it, it's in their formula already, and they'll look and see what the ISO rating is for that community that you live in.
Is that I S O?
I S A.
I S O.
Yes.
I think the insurance companies are, one of their big things is credit ratings now. They always mention those, a lot of them.
Yeah, there's, there's a number of different factors that go into the rates, but this, this is one of them that, it's, it's one of the few things that we can help with when it comes to that. So, the Vemco Firebird Stormwater Drainage Project, the material has been delivered to that site, and the contractor is going to be on site later this week to, to do that. That should be a two to three week project. They're a little delayed in their start time, but they still have time to get that done, particularly if it stays 70 degrees in October, then they'll have plenty of time. So, but they will be working out there. There's one homeowner that is probably the most affected. The contractor, when the material is delivered, actually, the gentleman allowed the, the material to be stored on part of his lot. They've already had conversations. So, there's, everyone will be affected some, but his driveway is going to be affected the most. So, the contractor's already talked with him, so I think that, that'll be good. One of the things that was brought up at the last meeting was the no turn on red at Main and Franklin. I know that's been brought up a number of times over the years. So, I talked with the police chief, and I drove this myself just to try to see, okay, why, why are these there and are they necessary? So, as you're coming up to Main and Franklin, depending on what direction you're coming, there's, there are different reasons that there could be a no turn on red. And as I looked at it, if you're coming westbound, coming this way on Franklin, and you're going to make the turn to northbound, you cannot see down that hill. Can't happen there. If you're coming northbound to turn east onto Franklin, you can't see, particularly if there's cars parked along in front of the old hardware store, you can't see that way. So, those two, there's no question. The other two turns, if you're coming this way, if you're coming south on Main Street to turn right, you cannot see past this building unless you get into the crosswalk, which then creates a whole nother violation of the traffic code if you do that. And I'm not sure that we want to do that. Really, the only of the four that you can, you can do it is if you're on westbound to turn, I guess, southbound. You can clearly see up the hill with no problems and without having to pull into the crosswalk or anything like that. The, the police chief gave me some additional information. First of all, since 2014, beginning of 2014, there's only been three traffic accidents that were turn-related at that intersection. I'm going to, you can't really say, but you're going to attribute part of that because we don't allow turns on red. There would have been more accidents had there been. We time the cycle. If you are north or southbound, it's 35 seconds until the light changes. If you're east or westbound, it's 40 seconds. So, the most you're ever going to sit at that light is 35 to 40 seconds before it cycles through to the, that. So, every minute and 15 seconds, it's cycling all the way through, and everyone has their So, I, I guess our overall recommendation would be to not change that. I understand that there's times that you'll sit there, and there won't be any traffic, and you're sitting at a no turn on red, but I don't know that it's worth putting the potential for additional traffic accidents or the pedestrian crosswalks. If you, as soon as you introduce right turn on reds, then the walk, don't walk becomes another issue people are supposed to yield to the person in the crosswalk, but if they're not paying attention, then that doesn't. So, that is what we found. If you have any other questions or have any comments, I'd be happy to listen to that.
Guess I'll still go around the back way.
I'll just wait.
Just wait 35 seconds.
The dangerous one is the, the, I forget the name of the road, the post officer trying to turn out of that coming out. That is horrible. There's nothing you can do about it. There are, got no parking, I think, for...
Yeah. Yeah, you got, because of the way the building sits so close to the road.
Their buildings are right up on the sidewalk. It's a real...
Yeah, that's, that's real danger for pedestrians if you're not paying attention if you're driving.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
You're on them.
I agree. So, that is what we found. If you have any other thoughts, we'd be happy to take those into consideration.
I could see it fine when, once I pulled into the crosswalk.
Pulled into the crosswalk.
Right.
If I'm not supposed to do that, maybe I shouldn't do that.
I would have...
That violates ORC 4511-712, if you, if that's what the police chief says. So, I'm, again, we're not going to cite somebody for that until they, if there's an incident in that crosswalk.
At 9 o'clock at night, when there's no, no cars and no people on the street, you kind of forget about that.
Yeah. And then finally, I know we talked about budget, but we will have a work session prior to our next meeting. We'll probably start that at 5:30, and the police and fire department will come in. We'll each have about 45 minutes like we did last year to review their budget. We're in the, in the final process of going through that, so we have a working budget for, for council to review prior to the next meeting. Then we'll have a regular meeting at 7 o'clock following that. That's all I have this evening.
Council, do we have any questions for our city managers this evening? Seeing none, we will move on. Committee reports, service?
I had something, but I left it at work, so next time I'll have something.
All right. Safety?
Fire department had their open house. I attended it. They, they had a good one. There was no parking. was no parking.
Yeah.
So that went well.
That's always a great event. I couldn't go this year. It's first year. I haven't been there forever. So I can't remember what I had going on, but it was...
I didn't get home till late.
Thanks to the Department of Fire Department.
Finance and audit, Mike?
Mayor, just comment that the city manager issued our financial statements internal update, I guess, through September 30 of 2015, and we continue to track very close to budget. A little bit of an uptick in EMS receipts, which kind of surprised me a little bit. I don't know if that's a different thinking about that or what's going on. Hopefully, our people aren't getting bills than they were before. Our expense budget appears to be very much on track. The only real spike is the capital, which has been budgeted items. So I think we're doing well. So...
And we're...
We wish the city staff for staying on top of it. And it just makes it so important for the budgeting process and the way we did it last year by bringing in the individual department heads, and not just letting them give us a number. But we, you know, certainly had a lot of discussion about all the numbers. I think we've got a good budget, and I think our process is working. So nice change and a good job with it.
Thank you.
Any old business on council?
We could talk about community fairs.
I already crossed off, because I thought Mike was done. Community fairs, Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yeah, the only thing I have is to remind people that Halloween in the park is this weekend on Saturday from 3 to 6 down at Second Right.
And Halloween is what day?
Baker's Night is...
It's Saturday, 31st.
Saturday, 31st.
Yeah. I've been asked that a bunch. I didn't know what it was, so I looked it up today to make sure.
A lot of people ask me, why is it on Saturday? I don't know, Mark, if you can like explain.
Because we're going to keep it.
This Saturday didn't work.
We're not going to have another invasion like we had last year.
I know, but how we pick the dates in advance and all that's good.
And now they've pretty, that's how it used to be. The mayors and managers used to pick the dates, and they would avoid certain days, and they would avoid Fridays, Sundays, and Wednesdays. We've pretty much gone away from that now. We're doing October 31st. Of course, last year was the first year we did that, and we didn't go on October 31st because it was a home football game on that Friday night. But here, going forward, Halloween will be October 31st, and that's when we plan to do it. And that's, that's what it'll be. So a Saturday night. The following year, it'll be on a Monday night because of leap year and...
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, you're right.
So we plan to, and we'll deal with it on an annual basis if there's something that happens. But my hope is that the weather is fine, and we don't have to worry about that.
Mrs. Mittelstetter, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, we are done with committee reports. Any old business on council this evening? Any new business? Open discussion. Nick?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Forrest?
Nothing tonight.
Just mentioned, you know, an ISO rating of two, as you said, the top 3%. I think that really speaks volumes about the fire department and the organization that we have. And for a city our size to have a department that's recognized at that level is really good.
And I remember when we got a three rating, that's probably about 15 or...
Yeah, I don't know. It was in 2007, it was a three. I don't know when it was before.
We've gotten named. We thought it was a big deal back then. So it is good.
Nothing more.
Only thing I have is that I attended a Miami Valley Regional Planning Meeting last Tuesday, and there was a presentation by the Miami Valley, what are they called?
Planning?
Miami Valley Regional Planning.
Miami Valley Regional Planning.
Regional Planning. And they are still trying to connect all the bike paths. So this kind of goes along with the issue 18, but they are trying to still connect, make a plan, a long-term plan, to try and see if they can connect all of the cities in Green County to the same bike path you could get from Bel Brook to other areas.
That would be nice. Probably one of the second biggest questions I get asked, or at least top three or four.
It's still in the plan. It's in the long-term plan. And the section between us and Spring Valley is still looking to be developed, so.
Ms. Schweller?
Just a comment on the ISO rating. I think it's something we should congratulate the fire department for and the command staff. We've gone through quite a bit of transition. We've certainly changed a lot of the people over there. It's just nice to know that we went through the transition. We made the changes, and we haven't missed a beat. We don't have any catch-up time, and we'll do better next year now that stuff. They just keep forging ahead. So certainly congratulate them for me.
And I would just like to thank Jamie. This is her second full meeting as our clerk of council. You're doing a great job. So thank you very much. And thank you, Louis, our camera person, who has been here a pretty long time doing our camera for us. This is where I, we do open it up to the audience. Once again, you can come up if you have any questions for us. You have five minutes. No one's jumping up today. I do like that we have residents here this evening. It's all nice to, always nice to hear input. So thank you very much for coming up. Does any other member on council have any other business to come before us this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.